Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's right now 6:13 PM. We are doing a study session and presentation by Paul Rutherford from Priority Waste Management. What I plan on doing first, I'm gonna go ahead and have members of the audience that are here for questions, concerns, comments. In addition to that, there's some council members that have questions, concerns, and comments, and then we're gonna have a 10, 15-minute presentation from Paul Rutherford from Priority Management. Just to give you a little bit of a synopsis as far as why we are here, we made a decision as a council body to make a change about maybe three, four months back. We switched over from the previous company, and after some presentations and consultations and many conversations, including with the mayor and this particular company, we decided, city council as a body, to go with Priority Waste. And I'm saying that because we always have to own up to good, bad, and ugly, as a movie would be. So I myself, with my fellow council members, decided to pick Priority. I've spoken many and many a times with Paul Rutherford from Priority. His customer service, I could tell his people over and above him has been excellent. He's always taking my calls, taking my emails, return my calls, return my emails, return customers' calls, and spoken with customers. So as far as customer service on Paul's end, excellent. On the other hand, though, we've had some very serious challenges with Priority, and I'm sure that that's why some of the residents are here today, and we're hoping to get some of these cleared up. With my many conversations with Paul, they've made a change in leadership at our city. He's pretty much taken over, him in addition to somebody else with him. He feels it's going in the right direction, but I know for a fact, for myself, and I'm sure for other council members, and I'm sure for some residents, it doesn't feel like it. So hopefully he can clarify for us. So what I'm gonna do first, Councilman, we're not gonna do the presentation. I'm gonna give you an opportunity, maybe three, four, five minutes, give us just a general update as far as where you're at with this. Then we're gonna take council members' questions and concerns, members of the audience, questions and concerns, and then we're gonna have you do your 10, 15-minute presentation. How does that sound?
Absolutely perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so give us a general outline, synopsis, maybe three, four-minute synopsis as far as where you're at, Priority, up to date, in the last week or two.
Yes. As we know, we've had many issues over the last two weeks, and that we have been behind in routes, what have you. Currently, as I speak, I came from a command center that was set up in our yard in Romulus off of Beverly Road. We have literally all of the management of Priority Waste in the command center. We have trucks that are GPSed, and we are tracking them throughout the city and moving them all over the city. Currently, right now, there are 10 units in Dearborn Heights. We expect that by the end of today, we should be finding some relief for residents who have been waiting for that type of relief. But we're identifying areas, we're running complaints, we are doing everything that we humanly can to get Dearborn Heights settled down and get the residents the service that they deserve.
Got a question for you. Sorry, I'll get that for you. Got a question for you.
Here, right on this one.
The "why" part. So this is a company that's not brand-new in business. The interview went well. I can speak for myself, I was very comfortable going with you guys. You started, we had a lot of concerns, things were being dropped, and I kept, I was one of the ones that was defending you guys, giving you guys the benefit of the doubt, saying, they're new to the city, give them an opportunity to work out their kinks, cross the Ts, dot the Is, figure things out, we should be good. But now we are 90 days into this thing. Okay, it started, I think, around March, if I'm not mistaken.
March 23rd.
Correct. And right now, we're deeper, almost 90 days into this thing. And I'm gonna tell you honestly, your customer service has been great, but I tell you from my perspective, Priorities' service is inexcusable. Now, I gave the benefit of the doubt, I kept thinking things were gonna get better, things were gonna get better. It wasn't. I, I can speak for myself, anywhere I go, you know, I'm, I guess blessed to be a recognizable name in the community, people will see me, run up to me, or call me, and I even sent you an email. I said, "I can't go anywhere without being approached."
We spoke to some residents on the phone together.
Absolutely, and none of them were compliments. That's what concerns me. Not one was called and said, "Hey, I love this system." Here's where I'm concerned with the garbage companies. To me, garbage company, garbage companies, and this with due respect, please, they should be a no-name brand, meaning the resident should not even know who our garbage collection company is. Do you know why? Because when they know, that means there's a problem. It should be an afterthought. Like, for example, I don't know what the name of the truck, obviously it's our city that plows the snow, I don't care how many trucks we've got, I don't know, all I care is, when I'm driving and it's snowing, I wanna be able to drive through the snow with no problem. The residents for their garbage, it should be a non-thought. I went to visit my mother, the neighbor across the street says, "Dave, come on over here." And I called you that day, and I had to speak with her from my cellphone. I finished with her, I figured, okay, good, I can walk in and see my mom, and she can give me a hug and be happy to see me. And then she starts complaining to me about the garbage that's in front of her house. I'm telling you honestly, it's not acceptable.
Yes.
Council chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Now, I don't know if we wanna do all the council people first, or take people from the audience.
Let's, let's give each council member one question, and then we'll go ahead and take from the audience after that, and then we'll come back to council members.
I mean, it's, it's more than one question, trust me.
Or common.
And I'm just gonna, you know, I'm not gonna beat around the bush here. This is the worst service I've ever seen in my entire life, period, bar none. I thought GFL was bad, but this is horrible. And we say we had a change in leadership. That person called me personally, told me he did not get fired, he quit. He was put in a position where he could not, couldn't do his job, because he had neither the manpower nor the equipment to do it. Those were his words to my...
He called me also.
Okay, and I told him to call you, okay? And I spoke to you personally, right out in front of my house.
Yes, sir.
I'd been assured that everything was gonna be done that week. It hasn't been done. I was assured by the mayor three or four weeks before, by the end of the week, it's gonna be done. It's not, okay? I had you tell me a truck broke down, so you couldn't finish, but you had 14 trucks ready to go the next day. Hell, you should've pulled one of them trucks out and finished that same day. I've got, literally, I can't, I can't even count as high, the phone calls that I've received, emails I receive, 11 o'clock at night on Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night, no peace at all. And I get frustrated talking to the citizens, because I can't help them. And to me, I get, I'm getting hollow promises here. Now, I'm to the point where I'm getting, say, you buy a Pinto, you got a Pinto, you buy a Rolls Royce, you got a Rolls Royce. I got the burnt-out Pinto this time, okay? And I'm not gonna have it no more. I'm done with it. As far as I'm concerned, we can have a mileage increase and go with the higher bidder and have a proper trash pickup. Our residents don't know if they can park their cars on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. Have no, have no clue, okay? And I'm tired of it. I'm, I can't take another phone call anymore. You guys are gonna drive me insane, and I'm gonna be in a hospital over this, okay? So I'm done with you guys. I'm done with your promises, I'm done with Priority, period. And I will be asking this council at the next meeting to go forward, to go open for bid. Now, that doesn't pass, you all take the phone calls, not me, because that's what I'm gonna do.
Council chair.
Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and go that way. Go ahead. Mr. Rutherford, thank you for coming on behalf of Priority. I won't beat around the bush either. The residents are very angry, and rightfully so. The trash is not being picked up, the recycling is really not being picked up, and when are, when are we gonna see improvement, or are we gonna see improvement? And if we're gonna see improvement, by what date? You said we have 10 trucks for Dearborn Heights, and is that number gonna increase?
We have put 10 additional units in today to scope, to scope through the city.
Well, how many total?
Total, you would usually, usually use four trash to recycle, two compost trucks in the city of Dearborn Heights. So we have those normal trucks, and then we brought in additional equipment.
So when can we expect to see the trash being picked up and the recycling being picked up?
I think immediately. I think that you'll notice the difference even, even with where we've been today. I know that we're coming back tomorrow, and we're going to be doing the same thing until every complaint is addressed, every complaint.
Thank you. And you're familiar with Dearborn Heights. Was it your father that had Peter Rutherford, and then you?
I used to drive in Dearborn Heights in 1984.
Thank you.
Yes, it was a family-owned business.
Thank you. Councilwoman, you got a question?
Okay. Councilman, go ahead. Paul, thank you so much for coming out here today, and just kind of echo some of what Council Pro-Town Council Chair and Mr. Councilman Bob spoke. Look, I told myself, I don't, I know you're doing a phenomenal job at returning phone calls to residents from me, from Councilman Dave Abdullah, from Councilman Ray Muscat, but there's been too many lies, and there's been way too many lies with what, with when things are gonna be resolved. You and I spoke May 14th, my sister Rhonda's birthday. You told me, "Mo, we suck, we're gonna fix it, things are gonna get better," and hell, things still suck. And that's where we stand today. I, I am living the same as most, as most of my colleagues are today, and we can't go outside. I can't answer a phone call. Every morning, I wake up to either a Facebook message, an email, a text message, and it's to the point where now, I'm just so frustrated. Since May 14th, we're at June 7th, and today, you're giving us another promise, that by the end of today, everything is gonna be cleared up. I don't even want promises, no.
I hear you, sir.
And I'm sorry, but I don't believe it. I don't think anybody in the city believes it, and it's not just one part of the city. So like, the excuse that I keep hearing is, "We picked up 80 composts," or "We picked up all this huge amount of trash." What about the four other trucks? What about the guy in Bedford? What about the person in Madison? What about Charlesworth? What about Sims? What about Amboy? There are so many different parts of the neighborhood that are still facing the same exact thing. It's not just one neighborhood. It's a citywide 11 miles. I want you guys to know, and I know it's hard, I know you've only been here for 90 days, but it's, it does not seem like it's getting better.
I've been here for three weeks, myself.
Yourself, and I want you to also know, I got that same phone call from that manager, that manager or supervisor. The supervisor said, "One, I wasn't fired, and two, I spoke out against this to not be able to, to not take on this, this bid." But we, what's happening around us, we're over-promising and we're under-delivery. And let me tell you who's, who's really dealing with it, the administration.
Yes.
And this council.
Yes.
I know you're doing it on the back end, and you're really, you know, and I see you taking on some of these phone calls, and thank you, really, Paul, you're doing a phenomenal job. Your company, on the other hand, sucks, terrible. I hate to use the word "suck," but it really, it sucks. That's just really what's happening. And no matter what presentation you can give to me today, it's not gonna change the fact that I'm gonna wake up tomorrow morning, and I'm gonna have the same exact conversation with a different resident. I was, I was called today with a resident that said he felt threatened by an employee.
Yes.
I, I mean, the resident told me, "Mo, the guy almost beat me up, because I'm scared." I said, "Make a police report." That's what I told the resident, I said, "Make a police report." That's unacceptable.
That's absolutely unacceptable.
And so, no matter what happens here today, no matter what presentation you give to me, I don't believe that this is gonna be resolved. We're still gonna be stuck at this. I'm gonna wake up tomorrow morning to WhatsApp, and I'm gonna send you all the voice notes and all the text messages, I'm gonna get made fun of, and everyone, people are gonna say, "Dave Abdullah, Mo Bedoun, and Mayor Bill Bazey, and Hassan Ahmed got on here, and they're all from Lebanon, and they got the same issue that Lebanon's having. Nobody's picking up the trash." I told you that earlier.
Yes.
It's a joke, honest to God, but that's what they're saying to me. I mean, at the end of the day, it's my integrity, it's my name.
Yes.
And I promised that the residents, that I'm gonna fight for basic city services, and something as small as picking up trash, weekly trash? I'm so embarrassed. That's just where I stand at that. Any other council members?
Council chair. Paul, thank you for coming here today.
Thank you.
And I repeat the same thing, I'm having the same issue. I sent you the email.
Yes, yes, sir.
Today, too, and my recycling's still out there when I came here at 5 o'clock. I'm getting the same calls from residents, same thing, and another complaint is that your trucks are leaking oil in some of the streets. So this is another issue, and I don't know if somebody, some of the council...
I haven't heard that.
I have not heard that.
Yeah.
Send me the picture.
So that's another issue that we're facing, so whatever presentation you're gonna give us today, I'm not sure if you guys have a solid plan, or this is just something you're proposing, because I'm, to be honest with you, I'm, I'm ready to support Councilman Ray Muscat, too, on his proposal, because enough is enough. It's been six weeks, it's been crazy. I mean, my, my yard waste sat for a week, smelled, it's been raining for a couple of days now, and enough is enough. I'm sorry, but enough is enough. Thank you, Council chair.
Councilman, you got something? Yeah, thank you, Council chair. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you all about the problems, because it's pretty obvious, everybody's, everybody here, and everyone here has the problems. I wanna speak on a couple-ish other things. You know, it's been reported on social media that city employees and council chair are getting special treatment, their garbage isn't sitting there. When I left for this meeting today, my yard waste and my recycling has been sitting there for over a week, last week's, and today's garbage day for me, and all my recycling, and I, I have five children, and I stress recycling. We go through everything, we recycle, we use my neighbor's recycling can, because she lives by herself, and those two were full last week, and this week, I had to bag all my recycling up in clear plastic bags, put them on top of my recycling. When I left here today, for this meeting, they were still sitting there, everything was still sitting there. And that's why I wanted to let it be known that when we voted on this company, I stress for a union company, because I have some people that work for a union company, they have no problem with employees, they're, you know, they got a better benefit package, even though Priority said that, "Oh, we treat them, we treat our guys better than union companies," and that's, that's completely false. I've called, and, and I don't like to say I'm a city councilman, you know, "Hey, I'm a city councilman, I'm calling for this person." First, I call as a concerned citizen, and then if I don't get any response, I call back, and I still don't get any response. Today, there was a driver came by, I was sitting on my porch, and he came by, and he picked up the trash, and he knocked over the trash, the recycling can from people across the street from me, and he sat there for a few minutes. He sat there and sat there, and he looked over at me, and he sat in the truck, and he got out, and he picked that can up and was swearing, and I don't blame him. The guy's probably, it's not his fault. I'm sure he's working all he can. It's, it's above him that we have the issue with, and I felt sorry for this guy, that he's getting all this pressure, but then he put the can in the street when he picked it up, you know, that's the... But, you know, I want, one thing I wanna apologize to Councilman Muscat for not voting with him last meeting to hold back the payment for Priority on our last payment schedule. Thank you.
Okay. So at this particular point, you got something? Go ahead, Councilman.
I'm speaking on behalf of many of our senior residents, who, when we've got bad weather and stuff isn't picked up, it falls in the middle of the street, they have to go out and risk getting hit by a car while they're picking up remains, and they don't know when it's gonna be picked up. I have an 87-year-old lady calling me every three days, wondering, they went two weeks straight with nothing picked up. I'm talking Hanover Street, west of Telegraph. And we worried about flooding last night, we could've had trash floating everywhere, and it's, it's just not acceptable. I went by there tonight on my way here, and one half of the street has been serviced, the other half is not. And that, you're talking two blocks, and you only picked up one. That's a problem. Thank you.
Now, I, I was told by, and I said to him, I'm gonna go ahead and say it publicly, and he said, "It's okay," by a former employee, and I, you know, I'm not gonna reference names, but you know who I'm probably talking about, who mentioned that the main reason that you guys are having a problem is the lack of overtime in your company, avoiding paying overtime, therefore you have much less employees. And I'm just throwing it out there, because that's what he said.
That's not true.
And you know who I'm talking about, the one that had the change.
Actually, I don't.
Yeah.
Actually, I do not.
Okay, so at this particular point, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna, before we go back to any council members, I'm gonna allow any of the residents to have any questions or concerns to go up and speak, and then we'll go back to your presentation and any other additional questions.
I just have one last question.
Okay, it's gonna have to be quick, because we said we do it, we do the residents. Paul, just for the record, since we're all, we're all here, and I think this is a question that be, every resident wants to know, excuse me, aside from today, because I'm, I'm not gonna accept everything will be done today, right?
I understand.
Give me a date, we're at June 7th. Can you say two weeks? Can you say four weeks? Can you say 10 weeks? Give me a date today that you could, that you could feel most comfortable with going back, speaking to your top people, and saying, "Hey, Mo," and it can be a hypothetical, but I need a, a much closer date than today, that you can potentially say, "This entire city is gonna be back on track." I don't wanna hear from my resident telling me, "Hey, what is the regular Monday trash pickup day?" I don't want that joke no more. I wanna know when trash, if Monday, if my trash pickup is Monday and compost is Monday, I should be done by Monday, in Monday morning. I shouldn't be, they shouldn't be coming to me at 7:00 PM, 8:00 PM, 9:00 PM. Nobody wants a trash company at 9:00 PM. I wanna be able to park my car in the street after garbage. Just give us a date so that we can look back and hold you guys accountable on.
I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Vince Hoiyampa, Chief Operating Officer, Priority Waste.
Hello. Again, my name is Vince Hoiyampa. I am one of the founders. All right, I started Priority Waste with a couple other people. I am the chief of staff and executive vice president. I am the interim chief operating officer. I've been holding that for a little bit, but needless to say, I understand 100% with the feelings of what this council has and the residents of Dearborn Heights. I am personally taken over all operations out of the Romulus Yard, which handles not only Dearborn Heights, but the city of Taylor and Westland, all right? I have been working with all of our crews since 5:00 AM this morning, all right, to diligently catch up, all right, and give you the service that you deserve. Yes, we have been, we have not been able to pick up all of the, whether it's the recycling or the bulk, on a daily basis, all right? We have brought in extra crews, all right, and I know our guys are gonna be working through 7 o'clock. We, you know, I'm pretty confident that everything that was scheduled to be picked up for today's service has been serviced. Now, there may be a, you know, a miss here or there, and I can assure you that we will address those tomorrow, all right? My goal, all right, is to have you back on schedule, fully on schedule, by this Friday.
Paul, with due respect, I heard that from Paul, was it last week, Paul? Multiple times. And I'm not saying you're necessarily lying, but I'm just saying what you thought you were gonna be able to get done, you were not able to get done. So put yourself in our shoes right now, as council members. What you're telling me right now, doesn't have much weight in my book.
A lot of speculation, a lot of speculation, but you're saying by January 10th, by then, you can...
January 10th?
I mean, I'm sorry, June, by June 10th, which will be this Friday.
My goal, all right, and again, if we are delayed in some way, shape, or form, we will certainly reach out to the mayor. But again, I don't have a crystal ball, all right? It is our intent, all right, to bring you current as fast as possible, and I believe we will have you fully caught up by Friday. But again, now, keep in mind, all right, there, we are, and Mayor Bazey is aware of this, all right, there are situations where you have, you know, basically the amount of garbage that you have from a full cleanout where...
Skip 'em. I don't even wanna hear that. Skip 'em.
And again...
No service to 1%.
Absolutely. We will, we will have those tagged properly and go forward with it, where we won't get delayed on that. Our, our general philosophy is not to put that on you, but obviously, we wanna make sure that we're serving all the residents, all right? So again, our goal and my, my belief is we will be, have this done by Friday, and I will be here at the next meeting, and you, if I, if we fail on that, all right, I should, I should say, let's say Saturday, just in case there's a miss on Friday, we'll be back out Saturday, okay? So I will be here at the next meeting, and you can tell me, Vince, you failed.
Okay. I'm gonna have the residents go up, but I'm just gonna say it publicly here. For me personally, it is on the table to possibly switch companies, so I'm just letting you know.
Council chair, if I may, Paul, I sent you an email on May the 25th. You received that, is that correct?
Correct.
And Vince, you received that email as well, or it was shared with you, is that correct?
Yes, it was shared with me.
Okay, and you are still legal counsel also for Priority, is that correct or not?
I am the in-house counsel. I, we do have out-house counsel.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and have residents go up to speak. Please state your name, city, and street, and you'll have three minutes. Yeah, she's gonna go out first, you could go right, if you'd like to, ma'am. If you'd like, you could sit right, or stand right, or right behind us, so you'll be next.
On deck, like baseball, right? Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. I actually have a question for council. The contract, I was going over it today, the contract with Priority, in regards to consequences for failing to provide service, certain service levels, it says for each complaint of a failure to collect from a residence, if it hasn't been remedied within 24 hours, the city shall deduct $50, and then there's a variety of other things. How is the city tracking that and doing that?
That's a good question.
If we're not receiving complaints, because we're complaining right to Priority, how are you guys tracking that and deducting the $50 for each house that was missed and not picked up within 24 hours?
Okay, so I can tell you, the administration obviously is keeping up with some of the numbers. The system that was put in place by Priority, and honestly, it made sense to go through them, because then you're cutting out the middleman, A, you, if you are calling the city on a Friday and they're closed, you as a resident won't be able to reach anybody at the city possibly, or if you're calling in the evening, like, let's say hypothetically, 6:30, 7:00 PM, you won't be able to reach the city, therefore you'll still be able to reach Priority. And therefore, they'll have better track of the numbers. But at the same time, the fact is, it's not working, because I've seen and heard from many residents that call Priority and are not able to get through, or are waiting on hold for a half an hour or an hour, and that is totally unacceptable. I don't care if it's 10 minutes, nobody should be on hold for that long. So that system is not working. Number two, in terms of the consequences, we spoke and instructed our corporation attorney to send a letter to Priority, and I know they're here, so we're sending it publicly, giving them a warning that this stuff's gotta be fixed up and fixed up fast, or else not only are the penalties gonna be kicking in, like we have as a part of our contract, but other possible consequences are on the line. And I can tell you, when that letter was sent, we were a little bit more happy campers than we are today as a council.
And council chair, that was what I was specifically asking about, was the fact that they had received my email communication. However, the consequences should, should start applying with regard to the deduction already.
Absolutely.
Shouldn't they, should they not have been applying from day one? There's no, there's nothing in here that says that it would start after a certain amount of time. Should, I mean, with my kids, if they break the rules, first-time offense, you get the punishment that was agreed upon. If the contract states it, wouldn't we be following this from day one?
I can speak for myself, I'm not concerned about a company, I, I don't want any company working for me, whether in business or here, more concerned about the penalty than providing great customer service. That's what should be the concern, not the penalty. Council chair.
Council chair.
Okay, so let's, let's try to keep it, or you know, let's try to answer her something quick.
No, no, actually, I had the question for a court counsel. So you said you sent them the email, and they haven't responded yet, that letter?
Well, I put in, at the end, paragraph, "I trust that this letter is sufficiently clear and that further explanation is unnecessary. However, if you have any comments or questions, please feel free to contact me." I took the lack of response to mean that Mr. Ruthenberg and Priority are well aware of what I'm, I stated and are going to just focus, instead of trying to respond to me, are going to focus instead on trying to get the service levels where they're supposed to be. Would that be a fair statement, Mr. Ruthenberg?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then just one other question, which I know you guys might not have the answer to right now. But how many complaints have been logged? Do we know? How many complaints since Priority started, like, by week or by month? And can we compare that to numbers from GFL?
So the complaints that are being logged are being logged by Priority specifically. When you compare it to GFL or any other company for that matter, actually, for a fact, way more, period. It's not, it's not even close.
In your experience for the complaints you've gotten, yeah.
Like I said, my mom, my dad have no clue who their garbage collecting was. And they shouldn't know. They don't need to know. They pay their taxes, and that's the end of it. My mom and my dad know Priority very well, and not in a positive direction. That's not good.
No, I agree.
And that's why I said, when you know who your garbage collection company is, that's not good.
But we don't have, you guys don't have those numbers.
Again, the administration's the one that keeps track of that. We are the legislative part of the body.
I know, but if you're having the study session.
Counselor Chair, she, 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 okay? Thank you. She brought up a really good point, and it was kind of just blown over. In the contract, it says $50 for a day late, or not picked up.
If it wasn't picked up and not ref- and not fixed within 24 hours.
If everyone remembers, a couple, about a month ago, I, I said, hey, this is ridiculous, making, skipping the city with the complaints and going right to the Priority because they're not gonna keep track of them. And I was reassured, oh, no, Tom, they got a system. They're gonna, it's gonna be okay, you know, don't worry about it. I said, no, I mean, who would, what company would tell the city they're having all these complaints? And that's ridiculous. You know, we want something from the city. I think the city council should get it by tomorrow. The number of complaints already logged and how much they've been deducted. Because that's part of the contract. And if we're ignoring that part of the contract, there's something wrong with that.
All right, so Paul, can you provide us with the number of complaints that you've had specifically in Dearborn Heights?
I want the ones from the city, the city has logged.
Okay, but that's one of the things that we're, okay, you may not have it, but that's one of the things that we were told. The purpose of going, of having the residents call directly to you guys was so that you could keep track of the number of complaints that are coming in and where your logistics need to be changed.
Counselor Chair, I want the ones that the city have logged up to date, please.
Can you have that? Okay, no problem, thank you.
And that was all, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Next resident, come on up. Please state your name, city, and street you live on. No address, please, just street.
Ellen and Kim Bolash. We live on Madison Street here in Dearborn Heights.
Oh, I spoke to Ellen today.
Yes, you did. We're the family that got threatened today by a garbage truck driver. We were sitting in our kitchen, well, it's actually in our living room, but at a table having our breakfast with the window open. The garbage truck was on the other side of the street, and he's screaming and swearing because, like, a rug or something, some kind of carpet or rug came out of the people's garbage. I mean, he was F this, MFers, I mean, just screaming at nobody. I mean, it was like he was not right. Something was not right with this man. So it's no big deal, we're just sitting there, you know? He had to go around just a couple houses and spin around to come to our house. And, because we live at the end by the cemetery, so he came around and he went to dump our garbage, and one of the bags fell off the top. He started screaming again, said you MFers should be shot. You're stupid, I mean, just crazy. And my husband, that's all he said. He did yell out the window. He said, watch your language, there's kids here. And he still kept screaming. So he left, and my husband said, you know what? I'm gonna get the truck number. So he got in our van, didn't bother this man, went and took a picture of the back of the truck. It was truck 426, okay? As this man sees this, he's screaming and swearing some more, threatening my husband.
From the next block.
Yes, so then, my husband comes home. We're gonna call, you know, we're gonna call Priority, we're gonna, yes. As we're doing this, here comes the garbage truck again, back to our house. And he starts screaming and taking pictures of our house and our address, saying he was gonna come take care of us later. After he had said he was gonna shoot us.
You called the police?
We did, and do you know the police said because he was already gone? Yeah.
Well, ma'am, I, I, I tell you, I gave your information, your address, name, and phone number to our former police chief. He's gonna go ahead and take it up the ladder to the police department. And then the director of Priority already knows the-
Yes.
All the information from you. So this is not gonna be just brushed over.
Okay, because my thing, my thing is, is you said, well, this man will lose his job. Well, that's really gonna have him come into my house. You know, and the thing is, is we called Priority directly. This was before he just gave me his card. Maybe he returned your calls, but they sure didn't return ours.
Well, so any resident that contacted me, Paul instructed me specifically to give out his phone number so that people can be calling him. Look, in a perfect world, what we want, I'm not looking to call Paul, with all due respect, Paul. I mean, I don't do real estate for a living anymore. I take calls for Priority for a living, it seems like. That's all I'm doing all day. And, and, and I'm sure you don't want calls from her, or from me, or from anybody. I, in a perfect world, I would wish I didn't even know who you were because you're getting the job done. I don't need to know who it is that's getting the job done. I, I, I agree with you, ma'am, but your situation is definitely police level, not our level.
And that's the thing, it's like, you know, because we've been missed getting our trash picked up too. That's one thing, but when I have three grandkids and gotta worry that this man's gonna come shoot my house tonight, I'm scared.
I, I, I know you're feeling, trust me.
You should be.
How well I know you're feeling.
I mean, people are having shootings everywhere. And the next one, if you guys hear on Madison Street, you'll know it does. So.
Okay.
We good?
Was there something else you wanted?
I think that's it, but-
Okay, yours is gonna be, like I mentioned, your situation's taken to the police level. This is totally unacceptable. And I'm sure Priority would, they've already said this is not acceptable. So it's gonna be taken to the next level.
Counselor Chair.
Well, thank you very much.
And just, just some, just some more remarks. And, you know, I know that it's extremely scary to be able to have, you know, something like that be said. I'm, I'm, and I want you to know, nobody here in the city or in the audience or Priority accepts that. Maybe there is something, but I would hope that you guys go out and just, you know, document it on your guys' end. I hope that, you know, we can have this documented. It's here, it's being recorded. And I, and we share your emotions and your frustrations, for real, seriously. That's not okay, and it's unacceptable.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for having the courage to come forward.
If you stay after, I would like to talk to you after.
Come on up, sir, please state your name, street, and city.
Thomas Yannick, Burger Street, Dearborn Heights. I've spent the last, I don't know, half an hour going over in my brain what to say, how to say it, condense it. You guys already know, you know. For me to stand up here and pinpoint, you already know. I was raised, I'm a business person. I was raised though, too, there are two sides. So you can't throw darts at one without the other side accepting or taking some kind of responsibility. So as a city, I believe, and I'm a longtime resident of Dearborn Heights, we have to take responsibility too. And what that means is, for example, and I'll use me for where I live, kitty corner, brand new business went up, good, welcome business. You go out there, you express, you welcome, please do not park. Lasted a week. You go out the next week, it lasted another week, the third week. Now here comes the, I don't care whether or not the other syndrome, find out a lot of the workers there are not from the city, surrounding city. Okay, that's fine, help, help us. Garbage trucks don't want to come through, they can't turn around, they bump into cars, big fiasco, the whole nine yards. People are still putting stuff, cans, in the street, okay? We send flyers out, we try to teach, we try to educate. I'm, I'm a firm believer in that. However, again, one ear, out the other, don't care. You can teach, you can educate, you can try to say, hey, please care. I don't know what the answer is when people just decide to say, I don't care. I'm a firm believer, when you hit them in the pocketbook, they'll start to care. I don't quite understand with regards to an ordinance that's in place, somehow, some way, financially, put somebody in a car, go around on trash pickup day, in my case, Thursdays, start ticketing. And when these people get a ticket here and there, trust me, they'll wake up. They have to wake up. It, it's continual. So again, thank you. We can stand here and beat you up till you're blue in the face, three weeks in. I agree with them. It's falling on deaf ears. But we have to share the responsibility as a city, however we do that. I believe in ticketing. That's it, pure the end. I, I'm not, I, I, I'm not against, you know, fining somebody, but until you do something to wake these people up, it is what it is. And, and I've got three houses now within our area, massive bulk stuff sitting on the lawn, waiting to be picked up. Someone said bypass them. Do we not have bulk trucks or not? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I can tell you with a lot of your comments and, and concerns, the mayor's department is on that, they are aware of that. They have spoken with our police officers, and they have spoken with our ordinance department, who are also looking into this. We are a little bit under manned, women, call it whatever you want to call it. But they are definitely focused on it, they are aware of that, and they are starting to give tickets. Absolutely. And as far as the education part, a lot of stuff has been put out. Look, at the end of the day, it's up to the customer themselves, or the residents themselves to do what needs to be done. And there's no way any resident can say they did not know. Because keep in mind, this is not a, a new invention in our city that we have a garbage company. We've had garbage companies for, you know, all these years, obviously. And there's been stuff mailed out. In my eight years on the city council, there's been stuff mailed out, brought out, the video conferences that the mayor, different mayors have done. The residents know. It's a case of caring, and that's it. Thank you. Oh, sir, name, street, and city, please.
Sorry, I missed the first portion because I had customers and I couldn't come. But I'm going to speak about-
Sure, can you bring the microphone close to you?
I'm going to speak about Act 345 at the end of my conversation.
Okay, okay, but I'd rather, I'd rather keep as much as possible to this, and maybe at the end, I'll either get up, at the end of the garbage part.
That's, that's great.
Okay.
I have a question. Which department in the, Zuhair Abdalha, 354 Rosemary, before anybody say anything? Which department in the city is responsible for this contract? And to look at how it is executed and to follow up on all the complaints in our city? Which department, if anybody can answer me, Mr. Mayatkeif, or the mayor, or Mariana? Which department in the city is responsible to manage this contract?
I would have to say it's either the administration or DPW.
Since I was asked, my sense would be it's, however, the mayor wants to end up apportioning those responsibilities. It could be within his office, it could be within the DPW. That's the way it's traditionally been done.
There must be some person who is in charge of looking at this contract. Not the mayor, not the city council. It's not their job to take phone calls from the residents. It's a great that they respond, and I thank you because you guys doing a great job in responding. But there must be some head of department who's responsible for this contract, who keeps a track of what's going on, who keeps a track of everything in the city, and follow up on every complaint and register those complaints. You don't give the fucks, you know, the way to go and protect the chicken. You have to do it. This is our job, our city. We have to do it. On the other side, we have to either make one day a month for people to put large items outside. And this will give a chance to Priority to have two people on the truck, not just one, because there are some items heavy. One person cannot in any way carry it and throw it on the truck.
I, I, that, no, please. We've always had one bulk item per week, always have.
That, that is fine, counsel, ma'am.
We've had amnesty days in the past where we schedule those days. So that's not something that's new. And I will say more about that when it's the city council's turn. Just want to make that clear.
I'm just trying to find the solution to a problem. Dearborn can send somebody for a special pickup, they charge you $75 for a special pickup when you have lots of items thrown outside, and they send you a bill. So we need to think a little bit outside of the box because this contract, I voted yes on it when I was on the council, it's a disaster, and it is time for you to think of some alternative. Mr. Baydon, you asked him personally on 10/22, are you going to do this? Are you going to be better than GFL? And he answered absolutely yes. And I can tell you absolutely is no. It's time for you in the administration to raise up to the responsibility and to change this company. We deserve better.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else from the audience that would like to speak in regards to the garbage collecting? Come on up, sir. And also, I don't see nobody on Zoom, so if there's, is there? I see it.
My name is Ron Frenzy, I live on Fairwood in Dearborn Heights. And I, I have just two matters. One is that has to do with customer service. Shortly after Priority started, on Monday, I was supposed to have my trash, trash taken. It wasn't. So, so on Tuesday, it still wasn't taken, so I called them up. I waited, I called them up a little after 10 o'clock, waited 10 minutes, no one answered. I waited a couple hours, called, called them up again, waited 10 minutes, no answer. And then I called up a third time, 10 minutes, no answer. What's the phone number that we can call that someone will answer?
Okay, I can answer that for you. Paul, not to put you on the spot. Are you ready to put your phone number public?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you can contact Paul. His phone number is 313-215. I got it memorized, I don't know the last phone numbers, but I know it's 215.
1673.
1673. 313-215-1673. And again, for management at, at Priority, Paul's been giving me excellent customer service as far as returning calls, et cetera, et cetera. But at the end of the day, we didn't hire Priority to speak to Paul. We hired Priority to get the garbage picked up. But that's the best number to call. I mean, you got management right there. And the other-
Oh, yeah, sure. Okay, and another thing is, so a little fast forward. Today at 3:30, I called Priority. I waited eight minutes, and a lady picked up the phone. And I just, I was curious, how many people are in your department answering phone calls? She said, I don't know. Yikes. How is that possible? That she doesn't know how many people are answering the phones for Priority?
And, and, and I do gotta let you know, Paul, and I let you know that already, that one of the residents that called and was complaining, and I, and I put her on the phone with you, and she told whoever it was, the answer, told the resident, you can keep talking all you want, I'm gonna put you on hold, you're talking to yourself. That, again, is not acceptable customer service. I hope whoever that person made that statement, and I'm sure you could look it up based on who the, what the address was, is either no longer working or at least in a different department.
And then the last thing is, I'm really, really happy about this meeting. Everybody's mad, I'm really happy.
Thank you very much.
The rea-, no, well, well, what's the reason? The reason is that, that the city gets charged around $213,000 a month to pick up the trash, which is fine. But if you figure it out per person, it comes out to $2.32 every time they picked up the trash, 232. Now, I've missed, they've missed my house on trash five days, so they owe me $11.60. Now, what, so why am I happy? That one lady says, no, it's not 11.6, it's, it's, it's not like $2.32, it's $50. Holy cow. So I have 50 times 5, that's $250. Man, I'm happy. What's the phone number of the treasurer so they can cut me a check tomorrow? Because that's what the contract says, isn't it? Just say yes.
100, no way.
No, but just, no, but that's what the con-, isn't that right? Just say yes.
Well, it goes to the city, not, not, not directly to a resident.
No, it doesn't? Well, that, no, I'm mad he doesn't.
What'd you do before retirement, I'm curious?
Pardon?
Engineer, right?
Math teacher.
Oh, okay, pretty close, pretty close, pretty close. Good job. Thank you for being a great teacher.
But we can collect.
Well, the city can, but we'll look into it.
That helps your tax dollars.
That's right.
When they collect.
It gets divided amongst all of them. Can you let me know by the next council meeting how much that comes out to per resident? Name, city, street?
Hassan Saab, John Daly, Dearborn Heights.
Mike.
Hassan Saab, Dearborn Heights, I'm John Daly. So I know everybody's bashing Priority and everything. Instead of bashing them, just honestly, just hold their payments. I mean, they're collecting for services that aren't getting completed. Just hold their payment. When you hold someone's payments, they're gonna do their job. When you hold someone's payments, they're gonna do their job. Just hold the payment. It's simple.
It's what I've been pushing for.
I mean, we live on a main road, you tell our garbage isn't being picked up. It's a week delay. It's a citywide issue. There's no excuse. Hold their payment. They're being paid regardless what weekly or biweekly their payments are in full. There's garbage that's not being picked up biweekly or weekly. Just hold their payments.
As, I could answer that for you. We did instruct our corporation counselor to send them a letter letting them know that everything's on the table.
The letter is not enough.
No, I understand it, but again, just, one of the things that the corporation counselor told us is we gotta be careful because we can only do whatever things are within our contract. At this point, I can speak again for myself personally, everything's on the table, including them no longer being our company.
Because I remember when they won the bid, the guy that's responsible for municipal relations said they have their trucks waiting in the lot and employees and everything. I mean, now that the services are being ran, it's not a city council issue or administration issue or a city issue. It's their issue.
Right.
And the city should just hold their payments back. They're not caught up, they're two weeks behind, they shouldn't get paid for two weeks.
It's definitely on the table.
I'm no math teacher, but if it's fifty dollars a day, I mean, we should at least be given back at least two hundred and fifteen thousand. They owe us about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
I'd say just hold the payment. I'm not gonna, I mean, this council voted on what they represented and, you know, it's not your fault to take calls or the mayor. It's their problem.
Gary, if you could do me a favor?
As a resident, I'm asking you.
No, no, absolutely.
Honestly, put a stop on their payment.
If you do me a favor, can you email all of us what different options we've got available to us? Hopefully by the next council meeting next Tuesday, based on the representative here, we don't have to deal with this. Which would be great, but if we did have to deal with it, what our options would be as council members, please?
Well, it would be.
As far as consequences?
It would be as the city.
Right, correct, I'm sorry, correct.
Right, as council members, specifically it would be the city and what the city could end up doing. And it would be an attorney-client privileged communication would be the way I would intend it to be drafted. If you wanted me to do it in a version that would end up potentially being shared, I would want to know about that.
At this point, I want it to the council members only.
Okay.
Please.
But Mr. Mayatki, I have a question.
And when would you want that communication to you again?
The sooner the better, but definitely before next Tuesday's meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I do have one last question though. If the council did set up a resolution to stop that payment, can it be enforced for the payment that was approved?
Gary, did you hear that question?
Yes.
Is the answer yes or you heard him?
I heard the question.
Oh, okay.
I didn't say that I answered the question. I would rather not actually address a question like that in a public setting. I think it's a little more complicated than people might think.
Okay.
But it's taxpayer dollars for services that we're not, they're collecting on services that they're not completing.
We have a contract.
But they're breaching the contract.
Yes, but the contract has specific remedy provisions and default provisions and liquidated damage provisions. So there are, it's a pretty complex web that we should end up going through and being careful about what we do. Otherwise, we get sued for reaching the contract on our own and them coming back and saying they want five years of revenue.
Well, then I'm gonna sue Priority on my behalf for violating and breaching their contract.
Not a third-party beneficiary contract.
Well, that's my point is what I'm saying. It's not a third party, but you guys represent the citizens. And our services aren't getting picked up.
But whenever we do something for the citizens, you have to recognize it cuts both ways. But if we do it wrong, then it's gonna end up hurting the citizens.
It's not the city doing it wrong, it's the company doing it wrong.
But if the city does not follow the provisions in the contract and isn't careful about the way it does, then the residents are gonna pay for it twice. One, they're gonna end up having the issue with regard to the service. Two, the service might not be remedied unless the city approaches it appropriately. And three, the residents might pay for it because now there's gonna be a judgment entered against the city for doing things wrong. So that's why we're careful about that and we make sure that what we do is gonna be able to stick if we're gonna end up doing something.
Thank you.
Thank you, son.
Mike Mackey, North Martha, Dearborn Heights. Some of the, actually, Mr. Mayatki did a good job on this contract. I reviewed it. There's a lot of provisions in here that allow for some discounts or some money paid back or deducted from Priority. So just a few of them. The contractor shall be paid no additional compensation for ordinary disposal of bulk items. So that's number seven. For each complaint of failure to make collection from a particular residence in conformity with the prescribed schedule of collection with the failure has not been remedied within twenty-four hours, the city should deduct fifty dollars. If the contractor fails to complete collection prior to seven PM, the city shall deduct one thousand dollars for each day the collection is not completed before seven PM. If during any given ninety-day period, the contractor in at least two days does not complete pickup in a collection area until the day following the designated collection day, the city shall deduct fifteen hundred dollars for each occasion and the contractor did not complete pickup in a collection area until the day following the designated collection area. Two things. Number one, Paul and Vince, have you guys discounted the bill to the city of Dearborn Heights? Have you said, you know what, we missed all these pickups? Did you take any money off the bill?
That's something that we are working through with the administration.
And two, for us to know how many complaints there are besides Facebook. Someone needs to track this at the city. Okay, you guys are overwhelmed with phone calls. It's unfair to you, but it's unfair to us to have to deal with garbage day in and day out. I can't talk to anybody in the city. The first thing they talk about, anyone I know that comes to my business, what do they talk about? Garbage, okay? It's not good. It's not right. I think this is above their capabilities and you guys need to make a decision quickly because if it's not, it's gonna be on you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Any other residents have questions?
Counselor, I'd like to comment on Mr. Mackey.
Yes, go ahead. But while, I'm sorry, one second, councilman. While the councilman is commenting on that comment, is anybody else that would like to go up? Because we're gonna go to Zoom next. Okay, go ahead, councilman.
You know, when we had the prior trash company, a member of the, I guess, administration or employee in the mayor's office took complaints and took care of them very, very well. We had, very rarely did any of us on the council or anyone else, once we gave our complaint to this gentleman, it was taken care of like that and we didn't get any calls back. Why we switched from that, I don't know. Maybe he was overwhelmed with duties. But I voiced that, you know, a couple, a month or so ago, why did we change from that? I mean, this guy was phenomenal in taking care of complaints.
You're talking about GFL?
Yeah, I'm talking about GFL and Lee Gavin took care of everything for us. And he did a great job on that and he knows it. And he would take a call from us twenty-four hours a day or answer a text, always. I mean, within minutes. We never had a problem. And, you know, why fix something that's not broke? And we tried and it was unsuccessful in the complaint department.
Okay, I'd have to agree with you, councilman. I can speak for myself and I think us as a body and as administration. I think that we dropped the ball. We didn't make good choices and now we gotta make corrections. That's just the facts. Next up is Hussein Alhaj. Please state your name, city and street name. And next after, it's gonna be.
Three minutes.
And after that, we'll go to iPad three. Hussein, go ahead.
It's Michigan.
Yes, go ahead, we can hear you.
It's kinda, excuse my language, but it's kinda disgusting how everybody's acting like a attorney. They just wanna start shaping something out of the charges for Priority Waste. And everybody's acting like an attorney and giving their own legal opinion while Gary Mayatki sitting in there and allowing all those people to give out these comments. And we haven't heard anything from Priority Waste. What was the main reason for the delay for the garbage pickup?
We will be hearing from them. They are here. They did speak. They spoke in the beginning. We allowed them to speak in the beginning. They've answered some of the residents' questions and then they also have a presentation coming up.
With all respect, council chair, I would kindly ask you to, if you don't mind, that stop all the comments right now, hear the rest of Priority, what they wanna say, what do they have?
They are next.
Public comment, if you don't mind.
Correct, they are coming up next, absolutely.
Thank you, council chair.
No problem. But we're gonna take, we did promise we're gonna take iPad's call first. So iPad three, you're welcome. iPad three, please, okay, you're on. Please state your name, city and street name.
Hi, my name is Paul Smith. I live on McMillan, Durbin Heights. For Mr. Yannick, he and I both had our an hour and five minutes ago, so that should be some good news. The question I had was the last question I had for the mayor in my complaint yesterday. And that is pertaining to what the gentleman from Priority said regarding the number of trucks. He said we have four trucks picking up garbage, two picking up yard waste and two picking up recycled. We live directly across Ford Road from Dearborn, which has GFL. We have never, in the number of years that Dearborn has had GFL, seen anything collected late. So is the question that we are paying less for lesser service and are five trucks enough? It's, by the way, a question I asked when GFL was involved. Should we have perhaps five, three and three? And is it an economic issue? And is that something that is contracted with Priority? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna have Priority go up next, so if you don't mind. Oh, I'm sorry, we have one more on.
Leslie Windlass.
Okay, Leslie Windlass. Paul, Paul, when you do go up, can you answer the gentleman's question? So if you want, start setting up for your presentation. We're gonna take one more call on Zoom and we'll go ahead and have you start. Go ahead, Leslie.
You are gonna go back to public comment after their presentation because I don't wanna, I wanted to comment on the presentation.
Okay, no problem. I'll do that for you, no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Paul, go ahead.
Hi, and thank you everyone for your input. Again, my name is Paul Ruthenberg with Priority Waste. Approximately close to three weeks ago, I was asked to come out of basically logistical retirement after thirty-five years and get into Dearborn Heights. I should say that my ego allowed me to think the first week that this is something that I could straighten out in four or five days. I soon found that I could not in four or five days. We've had many discussions with the mayor and the administration. And again, folks, we want nothing but the best for our customers. We understand it. Now, the customers are frustrated, we are frustrated. This is not a company that doesn't care. There is nobody in this company that doesn't care about what's happened in Dearborn Heights. I am simply here to present, based on my thirty-five years of experience, where I think that we and the city can partner to get a fantastic product at the curb. So with that, I'd like to start my, going through this presentation, okay? Whoops, I'm a little bit old, so excuse me for not being all that wonderful with this. So one thing that we did do is we brought in a supervisor that his only job to do is to follow Dearborn Heights trucks and follow up on Dearborn Heights complaints.
That's the new foreman you were mentioning?
Yes, that I mentioned in a message to the council last week. That is basically what his job is. Justin carries what's known as a tablet that what any complaint that comes into Dearborn Heights flows into his tablet. He is then able to forward any complaint to the specific driver, okay? That is the way that the program should work. And again, you can see without going through each and every bullet point, his duties, okay? These are the issues that I have encountered. And by the way, council president, I really did appreciate your comment. Years, many years ago, I had an irate resident ask me what my policy was and I told him my policy is you never know who I am. And I had messed that policy up because he did. So, well put, I agree. So our issues, missed pickup, an issue that we've been, that I've personally seen in the city, illegal dumping, excessive bulk trash and yard waste, construction debris, improper placement, loose trash not in bins. Customer service has suffered through that. I've tried the best that I can. I have also witnessed, when the trash has come out, I have witnessed residents putting trash bags back out. I have witnessed this. Now, I'm not here to say, oh, Priority did nothing, okay, and the residents. I'm here to simply point out my observations over the almost three weeks. Please don't shoot the messenger. I'm trying to go over my observations based on thirty-five years in this industry. There are, let's put it this way. If Priority Waste decided to go by weight guidelines in pretty much any company in this industry, there would be a lot out there, okay? So we don't really pay much attention to weight guidelines. But at the same time, there are quite a bit backbreaking compost cans out there that were very, very heavy.
Paul, I'm gonna interrupt you for a second here. So a lot of things that you're mentioning here are things that have been around for probably, what is it, fifty, sixty, seventy years that the city's been around. We did not take the sixty-three thousand residents that we had, take them out, put them on a different island and brought in new residents and suddenly we have new problems. So the point I'm making is the same situations, whether good or bad, from the residents' end, they have been around with any company we've had.
I think I could tie that up, council president.
But now we have more problems than we had in the past.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Definition of illegal dumping, what have you, I don't think we need to go through that. If I can get this thing to go, okay. Here are some of the stops that we picked up. You can see the clean.
Am I in the way?
Is he in the way by any chance?
No, you're fine, you're fine, sir. This is some of the stops that we've encountered that we've cleaned up around the city. From my personal experience, what I did see is trucks that would stop for large bulk stops. It would fill the truck up halfway. The truck would not get further into his route, his or her route, because the truck was filling up on these type of stops. Simply put, what I would recommend that Priority Waste do moving forward as well as the city is that we simply report these stops to ordinance and we go by them. Because what we ended up doing to satisfy, one, we dissatisfied five hundred. And so we need to absolutely change the way in which we look at.
One interruption, Paul, can you go back to that photo, Paul? That right there is unacceptable. I definitely agree with Priority. That is unacceptable. However, that's not sixty-three thousand homes. That's not the norm, exactly. This is happening, this is your one for every fifty or, we'll call it for one of every thousand. Skip that one.
Could I continue? It has been around with other garbage.
And you could tell there was, and that's unacceptable. I agree with you.
Simply a slide about recycling. I have noticed that when I look at the recycling containers and when we tip the recycling at the recycling center, that we are exhibiting about a sixty percent contamination rate at the recycling center. What we need to get down to is an eight percent or below recycling rate. So I will speak to that going forward as well.
The contaminated.
I'm sorry?
Council chair, can I ask a quick question? I asked this with the other company we had. What's requested by your company or the plant where you recycle as far as washing containers out?
As far as washing containers out?
Yeah, soup cans and.
It certainly is a great practice. It depends on what you're talking about as far as washing a container out. If there's a little bit of film inside the container, that's fine. But if you're talking about actual food and what have you in the container, absolutely not.
Now, what happens if you come across that? Do you just discard that product?
Well, we don't come across, we cannot come across anything.
At the plant or the recycling plant?
At the plant? I could certainly arrange a visit for you for a material recovery facility. I cannot speak to exactly which can and what they do.
So this is a separate facility than yours?
Oh, we don't, yeah, it's a completely separate facility, yes.
Yeah, I'll get together with you on that.
We simply take the trucks there and tip them and then they run through.
Washed out, glass bottles rinsed out, plastic jugs rinsed out.
I think it's always a great practice to do that, yes.
Okay, Paul, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, I just would point out that at the bottom of page eleven and the top of page twelve of the contract, there's no limit on the disposal of bulk items, but there's a specific process set forth in the contract in terms of determining the compensation to end up being used. And my sense is that Priority should be doing that, potentially bypassing some of these and then coming back pursuant to what's stated in the contract at page eleven. And I believe that this is under B seven and it has several subpar paragraphs. And that might be what we should really be looking at in terms of dealing with these issues. And I'm sorry to interrupt, but since this bulk disposal issue has come up several times and no one seems to be addressing it in a way that it's supposed to be addressed per the contract, I figured I'd.
And again, and again, all of these items are open for discussion, absolutely, and that's what we're hoping for. I'm simply providing my observations.
Okay, but can we skip over to the parts as far as solutions are concerned? Because these are resident situations that I know have been around forever and ever and ever. They're not gonna. Because these are resident situations that I know have been around forever and ever and ever, they're not gonna change, whether it's Priority, GFL, or anybody else, that's always gonna be around. So what is, what is the solution? Yeah, look, if somebody's not doing it right, then, then, then fine, we'll just.
What I, okay, so let's get to the solution, council president, okay? The, yeah, but we have been collecting these, that we have attempted to collect these. And this is where I think that in my observations are shared with Mr. Haimpa and the CEO and what have you. My observations, what I'm here to say is this. We need to join together as a community. We need to educate. We need to set up a system that will work when we come by these stops. In other words, driver photographing the stop, sending the address in, we send it over to ordinance, we wait for instructions, okay? I can certainly tell you without a shadow of a doubt, and this is my observations based on my experience, okay? I have seen men, these are large stops in instances, I understand that, okay? But I have seen the drivers out there trying to pick up improperly placed out trash, okay? That isn't tied, isn't bundled, what have you. I have witnessed this, and I am not in any way excusing the service level, I am just simply reporting. How is this fixed? This is fixed by putting limits on what can be at the curb. This is fixed by fundamental education, education, education. We stand absolutely ready to sit down with anybody in the city and develop a program based on education that will allow us to successfully navigate the city. The mistakes that were made, new kid on the block, trying to do too much, and instead we satisfy one, but don't satisfy everyone. And there you go.
So on that, on the education part, you can get together with the mayor's administration, and John Zadigian, who does a lot of the media stuff, Robert Ankrap, who does a lot of the media stuff for the city, between the mayor's department, those two gentlemen, I'm sure you can put a lot of stuff out as far as education is concerned through the city. In addition to that, like GFL was doing, there's a lot of educational items that you guys can put out to educate the residents, that's one. As far as the bulk stuff, we will, you figure out a plan, sit down with the mayor's department. And by the way, I mentioned it in the earlier meeting, I mention it again, the mayor is not here because he's at a graduation ceremony for the Westwood School District, which was already pre-planned from previous weeks, therefore he could not be here, he apologized for that. But I'm glad he's there for the graduation. So, put together something, but at the end of the day, I'm telling you, that's not the problem. With due respect, the problem is from your end. Because these people are putting out a lot of bulk items. Again, this is not new residents that just moved in a week, or two, or three, or four, or two months ago. They've been around, and ones that did this type of stuff, we used to hear, I'm sure from GFL, I used to hear from GFL, and previous to that from Waste Management. Let's put together an effective, workable system, this cannot go on. We've wasted a couple of hours on this, I've wasted many hours taking phone calls, and so have other council members, clerks, administration. If this has to get resolved, it has to be on you guys, with due respect.
And with due respect, I have a very old saying that I developed over the years, and that is, I've never seen garbage talked into a truck. Okay? So frankly, the education doesn't matter if we don't get to all of these units on every week. And that is what we're committed to doing, we are committed to doing a fantastic job. I am committed to regaining trust of these residents and this city. I have been through many situations in my life, and I've seen this as well. Okay, so, so I am excited, and I think as anybody who's talked to me, I'm a glass half-full type of person. But I remain excited because, folks, you mentioned integrity. They don't put how much money you have on a tombstone, they put down integrity about who you are. My integrity is incredibly important to me. Vince's integrity, Todd Stamper's integrity. None of us are happy to be here for this. We would rather be happy to be home with a good product being done on the street. But I am still obligated to say, okay, this is what I see, and this is how I think we can fix it and move forward. Okay?
Now, the gentleman on iPad three had questions, and after that, I'm gonna have Leslie Lindler go up, she had, Windler, I'm sorry, Windler go up. She's on Zoom, she has some questions for you after the presentation. For iPad three, do you have the questions? iPad three, we're gonna unmute you if you could just ask the questions only, please, so that gentleman can answer them for you. Go ahead.
Bawling, what we expect these people to do, is our contract significantly lower than that that we had, that GFL had with Dearborn? When we had GFL, four trucks, two and two, aren't doing it. It didn't do it with GFL. I got in touch with Palletco when he was the mayor, I got in touch with Bazey after he became mayor. That is not enough to pick up the materials in Dearborn Heights. No matter what the section is, are we paying enough to get done what needs to be done? That's the question.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And unfortunately, the answer is that's actually above my pay grade, because I had nothing to do with the actual negotiations for the city of Dearborn Heights.
Okay, but another way to rephrase that, are you willing to add more trucks as needed?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Leslie Windler, please state your name, street, and city. She had some questions in regards to the presentation, glad Leslie.
After hearing it, I don't have questions, I'm just gonna make a statement. So, my name's Leslie Windler, I live on Annapolis Street in Dearborn Heights, Michigan, four eight one two five. I'll just say that I believe Priority Waste bid off more than it could chew, to say the least. That was my opinion when they bid on this opportunity and everything that's happened since. They were awarded the contract supports this theory. The biggest issue you can have in any relationship is trust. So, not only did Priority Waste breach their contract, but they have breached the trust of this community, which is a way bigger issue. I waited to hear the presentation, I was hoping that, you know, I could get a little bit of more trust regained, but instead I really just heard excuses, I heard a lack of accountability, I heard lots of blame for their customers. I don't understand why a truck driver who knows that they have limited trucks, knows that they have limited time to do trash pickups, would stop at a home that has excessive amounts of trash and stay there all day. Why isn't it already your company protocol to report these type of homes to management, since you know you don't have time and you know you don't have enough trucks? That's not on the resident, that's on the person who stood there and picked it up. My home has been missed several times, and we called Priority multiple times for the same pickup, well over one day. So I know the city can get like two hundred dollars off my house alone. Then I was also told by them that they don't accept trash from bins that are not brought from their company, or the blue bins that are from the city. So unfortunately, for like the first two weeks with no communication, our trash wasn't being picked up, and we didn't know why. So after I called three times, I eventually found out that they supposedly have a policy that they can produce, that they only pick up trash from city bins. So that was fine, I paid a hundred and seventy-three dollars to get an extra trash bin and to get an extra recycle bin, just to find out that they actually do accept smaller trash bins for pickup. The bottom line is that they failed miserably, and if you believe that they're gonna change, then I have a bridge I'd like to sell Dearborn Heights as well, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Leslie. All right, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and have just one comment from every council member, if they have any, please keep it to a minute, minute and a half. Yes, sure, I'd like to have that. Yeah, absolutely. So, I'm gonna start from Tom Wenzel, and we'll move this way.
No comment.
Okay.
Council chair, thank you. Paul, thank you for being here again, but to be honest with you, the presentation, I don't know, you didn't give us a reason why the service was that way, and I didn't see a good implementation of a solution that you're gonna.
This is what I was speaking about, is the sitting down with the administration, investing in education, investing in what it is that we can do to get the process to where it needs to be, okay? There are issues, and we're not saying there's no issues with us.
I'm sorry, you think there's no issues on your part?
Oh, no, not at all.
So what's the issue on your part, we would like to know.
The issue, to be, this is where this sounds sort of, the issue is, we just, instead of passing by things, we try to collect things, which slowed the units down. The comment earlier about overtime, I'm sorry, but these guys have been out there fourteen hours a day. We certainly pay overtime, okay? The issue has been exasperated by a very early spring versus what I'm normally have seen, which is a middle of May to Memorial Day week, which is customarily, bar none, the heaviest week of every year in anywhere. Christmas week doesn't come near that. The, so, the issue is what it is that we thought we needed to do, and were attempting to do, and did not recognize it and change it quicker. That is my opinion, okay? And I'm not trying to upset anybody, I'm just saying that limiting to two bulk items per week.
I appreciate the fact you're trying to be a part of the solution here, but I still, I don't have a clear answer. Do you guys have enough trucks, do you have enough drivers?
Yes.
So, so what's the issue then? You're telling me that there's a few houses here and there, they have.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying a few houses, sir.
You're saying there's a lot of houses?
I'm saying, I'm saying it's, there's a lot.
And about the, I don't know, I see that there's cameras and GPS in the trucks, were those cameras before?
Yes, that's why I'm pointing that out.
Can you share those with the administration?
That's what I would like to start doing, yes.
Yes, council chair, thank you. And Paul, I'm gonna start off by saying thank you for coming out here and being a punching bag. But I want you to know, being a punching bag isn't enough, man, it's just, it's a very unhealthy relationship. On your end and our end, and it just seems like, we're not, you know, there is no, you know, turtangle, but I'm hoping that we can. I just have a couple of questions that I wish I would have asked you earlier. Can you tell me off the top of your head, or your CFO, maybe Vince can tell me, how many employees do you guys have employed with you guys?
Two hundred and eighty.
Two hundred and eighty, can you tell me how many of those belong to Dearborn Heights?
Twelve.
Twelve. Of those twelve, can you tell me how many of them also worked through, you said Taylor, Garden City, and Dearborn Heights?
Zero.
Zero, so those twelve are committed to?
There's one resi manager that oversees all three cities, so that's a shared employee, I should, so eleven.
My last question is, how many cities do you guys currently operate today?
Ten.
Are these ten people, or these ten other neighboring cities facing this as well?
No.
They're not?
Not, not in my, I'm sorry, I'm not to this degree, not to this extent.
I want you to know, then if these ten are not facing it, the eleventh shouldn't either, we're not second-class citizens here.
No question.
And I know you guys wanna do what it takes to fix this, you know, find a solution here. I'm gonna tell you, Monday's my regular trash pickup day, and probably yours is Wednesday. You got one of the nicest neighborhoods, I don't even know, yours is Wednesday, yours might be Tuesday.
Friday.
Friday, and, well, I can tell you right now, my vote is based on coming today to Monday, where I stand on Tuesday, if the councilman puts that resolution together. But Paul, if there's anybody that's gonna save it, it's gonna be you, because I know you're a class act man, you've taken calls from residents, from every single council member here, you really are a true, I mean, you should be the CFO, you should be the CEO of this company, in my opinion. But it's not enough for Dearborn Heights, you got ten, you have ten neighboring cities, we're the only ones that's facing this, I find that hard to believe. Two hundred and eighty people of ten different cities operating Monday through Saturday, it's not enough for all ten communities, but that's just my opinion.
To this extent, is, to this extent.
When I stated, with all due respect, is that you are certainly the worst. There are certainly issues, again, at my entire Romulus yard, so Westland has some issues, Taylor has some issues. That has been a serious problem, where it triggered the necessity of me coming forward to personally oversee these issues. It started unfortunately with the loss of the manager that was responsible for your city, and it did, and the person that we had in to replace also failed, which again, that has compounded the issue. So it starts with leadership, and I take full responsibility for not having the appropriate leadership to make sure that your citizens are properly taken care of. I am here to make sure that that's.
Are you gonna take over Dearborn Heights moving forward?
I am, I will be in charge of Dearborn Heights until I find an adequate replacement for myself. Because again, I'm the number two in the company, so I do run.
And you know what, and I'm gonna tell you, on council, I personally want Dearborn Heights to be number one in this company. I mean, that's where I wanna be at, that's what the residents deserve, at the end of the day. So if you're number two, make Dearborn Heights number one, that's the only, that is the only option we have here in Dearborn Heights. Okay.
Council chair?
Okay, ten seconds, we gotta wrap it up.
What do you have a mind doing about the attitude of those drivers? I mean, this is not the first time I hear something from residents, so it's not one driver, it seems like a bunch of drivers, they have this kind of attitude.
That driver, and again, we have bird's eye view, trucks have cameras, we'll be looking at that. That driver not only should be discharged, he should be prosecuted.
I mean, it seems like Priority needs to do some education too for the, for your employees somehow, because, I mean.
Absolutely, we'll be bringing in our HR department to look at this very closely and reevaluate the appropriate training for those drivers and see what happened. Again, I don't know anything about the incident personally, I just found out about it as I.
Yes.
I mean, to be honest with you, I did experience one, the same, similar example about three weeks ago. It wasn't my house, I was over somebody's house, and this guy was going crazy. Same thing, using, you know, bad language, throwing stuff in the truck, and basically going crazy. So please, if you could do something about it.
Yes.
Please, thank you.
We'll certainly. Two more council members, and then we're gonna call it a wrap. Constable, councilman?
Thank you, and so, we've got an understanding that if there's a large item, bulk items in front of a house, you don't let it slow the crew down.
Exactly.
You go on and ordinance, I've lived in this city all my life, my office is in the north end, I live in the south end. I, we see that in front of some houses, but that's, that is not the problem, I don't think, so. And what happened to these four people is just.
That's ridiculous.
Criminal, and hopefully it was caught on video, and hopefully the driver will be prosecuted, but we just have to see the trash picked up.
Absolutely.
We just have to see, I'm an attorney, I know from a legal standpoint, a resident being threatened like that by an agent of the city, that's, that breaches the contract right there, I would think, so, yeah, it's, 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 the situation's gotta improve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman, thank you. Paul, I received a call from a woman today that said, when she called to complain about the trash not picked up in her neighborhood, and unfortunately, I'm the messenger on this, so I don't know the entire details. When she called Priority, she told her, no, the truck will come and pick out just your trash and not the entire block, okay? That's unacceptable.
Of course.
You don't have to have fifty-five phone calls to pick up one block, okay?
Right.
That's, that's one, okay? Do you guys do background checks on your drivers?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's another one. And let me say this, you and I discussed something in front of my home this past, last week. Just because you're a trash hauler, doesn't mean you're a subhuman being.
Thank you.
Because if your life, if your job is to pick up trash, does not mean you're a subhuman being. You got a good job, you're taking care of your family. So the residents do need to put their trash out in a proper manner. And if memory serves me correct, Mr. Miatki, we can go back and we can check the records, and I'm gonna be ninety-five percent correct. We always had a limit on our yard waste of ten bags. The trash was supposed to fit all into the garbage container with a few times, if you like, summertime, people had graduation parties, being able to set a few other bags out, that was acceptable. But if you continuously have trash overflow, you were supposed to purchase another can. I remember that like it was yesterday, and one bulk item per week, and anything after that, you call special pickup. I know that, I see it in my head, we talked about it, I spoke at that podium about it. So, and as far as education goes, this city spends tens of thousands of dollars. this city spends tens of thousands of dollars sending out literature in booklets, nice booklets, on what citizens are supposed to do and not what, what they're not supposed to do. People either A, they don't read them, or they don't care to read them. Okay? So that's, but then I'm not defending you at all because I, right now, I'm so mad at your company right now, I, I can spit bullets, okay? You thinking AR-15 will do damage, stay out from my mouth. But anyway, yeah, it, it's, it's very, it's very hard for me to, to, to continue on with our residents being trash not being picked up.
Yes.
I, I, I'm sick and tired of the phone calls. I said it before. The only way that some, I'm going to get somebody's attention if I take their money away from them. That's the only attention grabber. Because if I continuously pay you at the, at the service rate that you're giving me, I'm never going to get good service. So I'm going to tell you right now, and I'm going to forewarn our corporation council, I will not tolerate this one more time. Not one more. And if anybody here refuses to withhold payment, I'm going to tell the residents, don't call my number, call their number. Okay? Call their number because that's exactly the way I'm going to vote. No more money until this service gets straightened out. Okay? So at this particular point, just out of fairness, Mr. Abdalhaq, you said you had a question. I'm going to give you, no, about the 345, right? So I'm going to go ahead and give you two minutes. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. Vince?
I just have one quick question. Recycle, is it supposed to go in the bin loose?
Yes.
Or in a bag?
Not in a bag, it's supposed to be loose.
There should be no bag?
No bags.
Whatever you want to call it, garbage recycle bin, recycle bin.
It should be loose items, sir.
Paper bags.
What do you do with, when you, when you shred paper, then it just flies all over the place?
Yeah, that's one of the issues and, and I can tell you windy days, but they do have cages up top and.
What's that?
That's what I use.
There are people putting like out of the kitchen into the recycle.
Yeah, if, if, yeah.
Yeah, and they can't see it.
And to your point, to material recovery facilities, plastic bags are absolutely hideous. It gets, it actually just mugs them up to where they can actually shut them down if they get too many plastic bags.
As far as oil on the streets also, as, as somewhat of a expert on that, the tremendous amount of pressure that those trucks produce in oil is, you'd be surprised, five and six, 7,000 PSI to try to push that trash together. It, it's, it's a lot.
Doesn't, we don't want it on the street though.
We don't want to break it. We got to wrap this part up. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
Mr. Abdalhaq, come on up. Because this is past the other one, I'm going to allow you to go ahead, but let's do two minutes, please.
I thank you very much, Council President, Zohair Abdalhaq, 354 Rosemary. I'm trying to be as fast as possible. The law states that the money which is collected for Act 345, it must be distributed within 15 days from the day we collected. I want to ask the treasurer, is she doing this? Or we have a plan to basically start doing this to obey the law?
The treasurer is not available. She had a, a medical procedure and she's not available today.
All right, I hope the council, you know, will take this into account that by law, we are in violation of the law right now. We should collect the money and transfer it because if we keep it at half percent in the general fund and we don't give it to the police where they can make 10 to 15%, that is a burden on the residents that we have to fulfill when they ask for money, you know, next year. So this should happen. And I was listening on my phone to the gentleman who spoke about Act 345. He stated wrongly that the officers of the police department get 84 months. Actually, the officers get five years in the drop program and the command gets seven years. So there are two things, five and seven. And in my opinion, the drop program is a disaster for the city. When they finish there, they, it should be five years only for everybody. And when it is done, they take their money out. Don't put the burden on the resident if anything happened in the economy. We are under obligation to flip over $2 million in the 5%. And I was shocked too when he said that they calculate the 5% into the, the money which, you know, they ask for. And nobody on the city council or in the audience asks if that is true or not. Lastly, if you allow me just 15 seconds, last city council, somebody made hint in accusations against my friend, Tom Wensel, that he might have done something illegal. I urge these people, if this gentleman did anything wrong, to come up tonight and open your mouth as you promised. Otherwise, shut up.
Thank you. Okay, with no other residents and nobody online, what we can do right now? I'm sorry? About what? Come on, as a former councilman, I'll go ahead and give you three minutes. It's okay, come on up. Come on, Mr. Pegan. You get your three minutes like everybody else.
Okay, I'm going to talk fast. Ned Apigian Rosetta Street. Hopefully, when I say something, I hope it's useful, not just a matter of complaining. I think one of our major problems, in my own experience, I, for the Detroit school system, did a complete trash study for all the city of Detroit schools. Different systems, some have lunch, some don't, some cook, some don't, some have gas, some have coal. And I made an analysis. One of the things we should have done here in the city, made a little chart, took in all the people who had given bids to us, how many employees do you have? How many regular trucks do you have? How many cities do you serve? Where is your dump? A cheaper company could use a dump that's further away, takes more time to go there. A cross-analysis of in looking at, asking all these questions would have made an analysis for you as to what you were looking at. Now, personally, I don't want to go into that. Your number, whatever they call that, you would find your answer. This is what I did for the city of Detroit myself. We didn't know whether we were going to hire workers, pay their pensions, we were going to buy trucks, whether we were going to buy compacters. The solution was simple. I went to the DPW and I asked them, how do you pick up the schools? And they said, we pick them up in the neighborhood. I said, that's the answer, stop that. Just pick up the schools with school buses. We didn't have to hire anybody, we didn't have to buy any buses. All the idea, we were going to buy compacters, a simple analysis of every aspect of what you have to consider. Now, I want just a little story myself. I generally don't come here to complain about me. But my garbage gets picked up on Thursday. And I thought the new company, if you have a complaint, you call them. You don't have to call the DPW and they call the representative. Well, lately, what's happening, I don't know why, they pick up the recycle the next day. So my garbage day is now two days, it's Thursday and Friday. As to when the sticks and the trash gets picked up, I don't know. I just leave it there till Saturday or Sunday. There's something wrong with this company. They cannot do the job. And when, if you evaluated them like I said you should have, you would have discovered it. So I am shocked. One time I complained like I was supposed to. Get lady calls me a week later and says, did your recycle get picked up? I said, no, I brought it back after three days, I used it for the week and came back. Something is wrong. But I'm a creative thinker and I think that's what you have to do in hindsight. You have to go back and do exactly what I said. You're going to find out what the problem is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
That's why you are a great planner.
Did that man leave from priority?
Yes.
Do you know that he asked me to write my name and phone number? That's how much he cared about what happened to me today, he never took it with him.
Okay, but that's why, ma'am, I took your name and number myself personally. No, no, I, no, I agree with you. And I've given your name and number to our former chief, who obviously still has connections with our police department. He's going to ramp it up, this thing is not going to go away.
I just, I mean, nothing was taken seriously. And when he did his presentation, it was not about anything that anybody had concerns about. It was about him getting too much trash for bulk.
Yeah. No, no, I, I, that's, that's why, and I'm saying it publicly, ma'am. If you'll notice, I'm not rude in general. But if you also notice, when I have to, the reason I cut them off, because I was not going to hear that this is all about the residents. That's why I said, let's go to the solution and cut out that it's residents leaving bulk out. That was not the problem. Okay, so at this point. It, it, it don't matter, Vince, even if they were construction tough, you know what? That stuff has been around for years and years and years. There's residents that do things wrong, it's always been around. It's never going to go away. Like I told them, we didn't take our 63,000 residents, put them on an island, bring new residents. This has been around forever. That's not, the problem is not us, the problem is on their end, period. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to take a three, four minute break and then we're going to go to food trucks next. Yep? Thank you.